Call the meeting to order, roll call please.
Councilmember Aparano?
Here.
Councilmember Bernworth?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Mayor Protim Obesal Martinez?
Here.
And Mayor Tucker?
Here. And then please stand for the pledge of allegiance and Steel Atkins would you please lead us?
Public for witches stands one nation under God in invisible liberty and justice for all.
Okay, adjustments to the agenda, the city council may amend the order adding emergency items, no abstentions or no votes on consent calendars, is there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we would ask that the council table items be six, B seven, and B eight.
Okay, and also C six continued till next meeting.
C six.
C, C is in cat.
Okay, we're gonna continue C six till next time, next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd also like to move item C two to consent, please. And I'd make a motion.
Second.
I got a motion in a second.
And I'm gonna do roll call vote.
Thinking.
Councilmember Aparano?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Obesal Martinez?
Yes.
And Mayor Tucker?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
City attorney, please.
Yes, the council met today in closed session, discussed one item of real property regarding the unnumbered parcel on South Imperial Avenue when it meets highway eighty-six, direction was given regarding price and terms to the negotiator. The council also discussed conference with labor negotiators with the unions listed and employees listed in the agenda, direction was given to the negotiator. The council discussed NOVAC versus City of Imperial and Gazette Ranch matter, update was given, no reportable action, and council also discussed one item of anticipated litigation which has not been completed, so that will be completed after my final report will be later in the evening.
All right, thank you. Next up is public comment. If you wish to address the city council concerning any items within the city's council jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit of three minutes on each person. And the first one we're going to have is Michelle Hollinger. Victoria Holmes.
Good evening, council, thank you very much for having me. Michelle Hollinger with Victoria Holmes and also representing Ivy Regional Chamber of Commerce. I have given you three flyers, two are for Victoria Holmes grand opening, we have a networking It's for the regional chambers twentieth Westmoreland Honey Festival, which is held on November fifteenth, and we would love for you to be good neighbors and possibly participate in the five K or come out and just celebrate with us, it is a fun time for everyone and is as well as open to the public. Do you have any questions for me regarding any of these events?
When you say five K, you mean run?
You can walk.
Okay. Just clarification there.
Don't worry, we know you're not gonna run.
Not gonna run. Definitely be there.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah.
Okay, the next one we have is Alester Lopez.
Not, not as a criticism of the program, but as to the clarity of the selection process. The Mayor for the Day program is based upon motivating young students to be active, active participants in our community at an early age. This includes exercising our right to express our doubts and discomfort when we believe that our opinions and views are simply ignored or and cast aside. Experiencing how local government is structured and operates and knowing the rights and responsibilities that we each have as a community members allows us to identify ourselves as an important part of our city regardless of our age inspiring pride in the growth of our community and Hopes, concerns, and fears unless our voices are heard today. Five, a one day event that only rewards three students is insufficient to secure the involvement of the great majority of citywide students. The goal of my presentation today is not only for my participation in this program to be recognized, but for it to be rewarded in the manner that the program establishes, being selected as one of the finalists for your consideration as mayor of the day. To disregard my submission without what I believe was appropriate considerations destroys the very, the very concept upon which this valuable project was created. My purpose tonight is not to simply complain about the results, but more importantly to express my opinion that I was unfairly disregarded. Regardless of tonight's outcome, I believe that every participant is a winner, but a simple fact that it provides us a path for our voices to be heard and our opinion to be considered. I propose as a solution that the five members of this council review my submission of which I am providing copies and determine if I earned the right to be included alongside with the other three finalists and be considered mayor for the day. Thank you for respecting my right to take part in this process for you.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
So I've looked at your application, Alester, and it's crazy because we recently discussed because so what happens when we do these applications, what we've been doing is engaging in the school and the school board has been picking the top three and then giving us who they choose. And it's reasons like people like you coming to do this that we're now gonna pull that and just make that directly to the city so we can see all the applications. But congratulations, like you're amazing, there's no way I could have done that when I was a kid and I would encourage you to stay for this item when it comes up on the agenda, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alester, if I may add, just reading some of the stuff that you wrote on here is amazing, listening to you talk, I've gone to other city, well, let me rephrase that, I've gone to other boards where their articulation of subjects are not like yours. So I would like to congratulate you on that because it did a lot of courage and you know, you're very focused, very talented on what you're doing. But yeah, like my fellow council member Bernworth says is, this is what we're given.
Thank you.
And it's not our choice that they give us what we, what we keep, the application, so, but we're definitely gonna start pulling that back from them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And kudos to you, I, of all the times I've seen students come up here, even adults come up here, can't stand there and can barely get the words out of their mouth and to see how you can speak in front of a crowd and in front of a council is just, it's, I'm awestruck. I, I think we see a potential future public speaker in front of us.
You'll have to run for one of these seats someday.
My sentiments as the rest of the board, like I said, we end up with the three that we picked from and but you did a very great job, good job.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
And Alester, I would encourage you, because the, the school board are the ones that the schools are the ones that make the selection, I would encourage you to give the same presentation to the next school board meeting.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up we have Gustavo Raza.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Gustavo Raza. I am the grandparent of Alistair. The reason we came here today is not to try to force an action or a response. The reason we came here today is that we don't feel his application or his submission was even seen. I spoke with a Mr. Gonzalez from the Unified School District. And in a phone call I had on Monday morning, he told me he couldn't even find his application. He looked through it and said, I'll have to get back to you if I can find it. When I told him we had the verification that it was submitted, he said, well, let me get back to you. Let me talk to city, see what we can do. Today I spoke with him in the morning and Mr. Gonzalez told me, he goes, well, this is what we agreed on. He will be contacted by somebody from the city today while in school or somebody from the school district. And it will be explained to him why his proposal was not evaluated. Nobody contacted him, neither from the city or from the school district. Your program is based on involvement of students. Learning how government works, local government works, learning the principles of democracy, learning the importance of being involved is what this program is about. Now we see that the opinions of one individual, and it's not just kids that we're considering. How many more proposals were not seen, were not evaluated, were just discarded? I'm not saying that the three individuals that got selected don't merit being here. They've done an excellent job. They deserve what they have achieved. What I'm saying is that we have serious concerns that some of these proposals were just discarded. I can state, and I hope that, I'm not sure Mr. Gonzalez is here this today, but I would hope he would have been here. He did not answer my calls when I called him at three o'clock. And to give us a satisfactory answer as to why he cannot find his application, why nobody contacted him, and why there's no explanation of why he was discarded. You have his proposal. You can see the things he stated, the effort he put into it. Now you say, and I'm not blaming you because I understand you did not see all the proposals. But I think you can see from his proposal and from the words he expressed, which I am very appreciative of things you said, that he did a very good job. So is it continuation of saying we think something is wrong? We think he wasn't treated fairly, but there's something we're going to do? Or just something that you as city council members as part of this program can do? Simply telling him he did a good job and saying you should participate again next year is not really sufficient. You want students to be a part of this program. You want involvement. What was proven today by the school district? And if you validate what the school district did, you are simply telling students, your opinion does not matter. Your opinions have no validity before us. Because we will discard you and not take any action when we see something as being unfair. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I just want to point out that we we will be having, as they told your grandson, we'll be having that item shortly. So if you're able to stick around for that particular item, maybe in about fifteen minutes.
Yeah, we we can make this right, sir, but you gotta wait for that item. If you can stick around to that item, this council will make this right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Alright, any other public comments? Presentation, A1, proclamation presentation for Fire Prevention Week. Okay, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas Fire Prevention Week is observed annually to raise awareness about fire, safety, and educate the public on how to prevent fires and protect themselves in the event of one. And whereas this year's theme is charge into fire safety lithium ion batteries in your home. It emphasizes that the importance of buying, charging, and recycling safety when it comes to lithium batteries. And whereas residents should follow three key calls to action. Buy only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And whereas the proper disposal and recycling of lithium batteries helps prevent environmental hazards and reduce fire risks in the home and community. And whereas City of Imperial City Council extends its sincere appreciation to the Imperial County Fire Department and all its fire responders for their commitment to minimize home fires and fire-related injuries through proactive education in prevention and protection. Now therefore, I, Mayor James Tucker, on behalf of the City of Imperial City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of October fifth, October through October eleventh, twenty twenty-five, as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Imperial, passed and adopted on this first day of October twenty twenty-five at regular meeting of the Imperial City Council. Alrighty, chief, please.
We have a special guest. I just gotta track him down.
Okay.
Mayor and council, I want to thank you for recognizing Fire Prevention Week. Fire prevention is key to fire safety afterwards. The damage is done, the people are hurt. If we can prevent it in the first place, that's the best the best approach. The lithium ion battery focus is appropriate because they're becoming more and more prevalent. And they are, they do cause significant hazards when they do catch fire. So use them properly, follow the instructions, and discard them very carefully. So thank you again.
Alright, thank you. And we can meet up at the sign?
Get a picture.
Yeah.
Go hang out with Sparky.
Go hang out with Sparky.
And with the participants and the mayor for the day, go ahead and come up and 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 all all. Okay, and and Alistair, if he would join us also?
Auto time, kids. Yeah, all the participants.
You can go too, Steel.
Yes, Steel, you're up.
Can we get the rest of the kids?
Can we get the rest of the kids up there?
Come on, other kids in the audience, hop in.
Come on, guys.
That one said no. The teenager's like, I got my headphones. He said no.
Smile big, Hunter.
There you go.
There. That's a good picture.
Yeah, that's super cute. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Sparky.
Thanks, Sparky.
Alright, thank you very much. Next up is B Consent Agenda. All items appearing under the consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council with one motion without discussion. Should any council member or other person request that an item be considered separately, that item then will be taken up at up at the time determined by the mayor. So we are pulling B six, B seven, and B eight.
And adding C two.
And adding C two.
I'll make the motion to approve. I'll second.
Okay, did you get all that?
I sure did, thank you.
Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, thank you. Next, C. Action item, discuss action, selection mayor of the day. And but first off, we will have presenter, Mr. Marita.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I don't envy one bit what you have before you this evening. I will say this, Alistair, I practiced law for forty years and your presentation was better than many I I've seen over those years. So this program, this is the third year. And basically, the the process each year has been the same. I I know that last year there, because I think what the council observed with the people, the students that appeared before you were interested in seeing more. And and so I think going going forward, that's certainly something that we'll work on. I think historically, when the when we started this, the thought was that the having having the school involved and having classrooms involved would get the most traction in terms of getting the students to submit the necessary application. And and so I think the the balance is gonna be achieving that together with some additional input from from this body. Because like in prior years, what was submitted to you were basically the what was would be considered the final three out of, frankly, we don't know how many if if they started with. So I I'm sure it was a difficult process on on their end. If there was an expectation that that city staff was gonna be contacted by the school, I'm not aware that 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 has happened. I did not have any conversation with anybody from the school or or Mr. Gonzalez. So in any case, that's that's where we find ourselves at this point. If 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 the if what I'm sure what you have before you is is a will be a clear measure of the job that is happening in our school district with with Imperial's students. Pretty pretty impressive. So like I say, I don't I don't envy what's before you. But what what you do have before you is the final three that was forwarded to us from the school.
Alrighty, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can ask, can we add Alistair Lopez to the list of and then have four of them?
I it's it's at the end of the day, it's it's a city program. And so I believe I think this 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 council.
I'll make the motion to add Alistair Lopez to the list of candidates for mayor for the day.
Second.
Third. Fourth.
Oh, yes. I was waiting to vote. Roll call, please.
You want roll call?
No, yeah, okay.
We're good. We got all five.
Yeah.
Alrighty.
Mr. Marita, is there a way we can, the the three candidates that were presented to the essays that were presented to us by the school are part of the public record available on the city's website, although the name has been redacted. Is there a way we can get his submission uploaded with his name redacted so that the public can see what it is he wrote? The the public has the opportunity to see the other three that were submitted, but I would like to get his uploaded so people can see what he wrote.
Does that reflect on the minutes?
I mean, he he's present. I would I would I would ask that he play lawyer. And if he has any objection to that happening, that that he say something now. Otherwise, I I would say that you could proceed on that basis.
Alistair, do you have any objections to that? I think the public needs to see this.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. And at this time, we'd like to invite up the twenty twenty-four Mayor of the Year, Steel Atkins.
You got taller from last year.
Good evening. My name is Steel Atkins and I was selected as last year's mayor for the day. My experience serving as mayor mayor for the day was fun, exciting, and educational. I wasn't sure what to expect when I was chosen. I thought I might just attend a city council meeting and sit up front with the the real mayor, but it was so much more than that. Yes, I did get to sit up front with Mayor with Mayor Amparano, which was awesome. But I also got to tour all of the different areas that helped make the City of Imperial run. During my tour, I got to meet the city manager, attorney, IT department, and all of the City of Imperial employees. I also got to tour the I also got to tour the police station and sit in the front seat of the police cars. I even got to sit in the jail cell, in the jail holding cell, a place I hope I'll never end up. We then went to the Parks and Recreation Department and found out about all the cool things they do for the city and even learned what the cost of a park slide, a new shade, or the cost of a market day's event is. After that, I went to the after that, I went to the wastewater treatment plan. Although it was kind of gross, it was really cool to learn about the process and see what happens when our waste goes gets flushed down the drain. I also had the opportunity to present the awards for the lights parade at Christmas in a small town. And I then got to walk around with Mayor Amparano and do meet and greet, meet and greets with all of the vendors. I really feel serving as mayor of the day helped me helped me to be a better public speaker and it will always be a fun memory. I hope the next person selected enjoys their their experience as much as I did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we will announce the mayor of the year. And I'm gonna start off by naming the council members. I just didn't know which direction to go. But the first council member will be Alistair Lopez. You'll be the. And second council member, Ethan Lara. Following, council member, Ian Leon. And the mayor, Harper. And the mayor, Harper Williams.
They're in still receipts?
What's that?
They're in still receipts?
Yeah.
And if you would, um, forward, please, um, step up here to join us for tonight's meeting, please.
Is that mine?
Make your match sound back.
So, so we're on this item right here. So we already went through all of those.
Alrighty, everybody set? Alright, let's go, C. Next up is C three. Adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash forty-eight, approving an application for the annexation of APN oh six three oh one oh oh five nine located at Neco Road and Labrouche Road. Presenter, Mr. Mora.
Good evening, council. Um, the West Seventy Group LLC is proposing, um, a total of seven hundred ninety-four residential units. Um, four hundred ninety-two single-family homes and three hundred and two multifamily units at the northwest corner of Labrouche and Neco Road. This also includes all supporting amenities. And the project requires several discretionary actions, including the annexation within the city. Uh, general plan amendment, zone changes, the adoption of the West Seventy specific plan, and approval of a tentative map. The notice of preparation for an EIR has been circulated to begin the CEQA review process. And at this moment, staff recommends that the city council pull the initiation to LAVCO for the annexation of APN zero six three dash zero ten dash zero five nine located at the intersection of Neco Road and Labrouche Road for the West Seventy Group LLC. Can I stand for any questions that you may have?
How, how long do you think it will take for it to be annexed? I mean, a year, two years, I mean, I have no ideas.
Uh, it takes about twelve, eighteen months. Um, uh, I think city manager office got a little bit more details because the, um, the agreement with LAVCO hasn't been approved or completed, so it could take a little bit longer.
Okay.
But at least we're, we're getting ahead of the game.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand that part.
And the developer is well aware of it.
Alright, appreciate it. Alright, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, um, Mr. Mayor, so a- as Mr. Mora indicated, there are several steps to the, uh, in the case of an annexation of this, uh, size and scope, uh, in terms of tentative map, zone changes, all of those things. O- oftentimes, the EIR all by itself could take many months. Uh, and indeed, one other factor that he mentions is the, uh, that the, uh, uh, the law requires that the city and the county enter into an agreement as to how the property taxes will be divided, uh, after the annexation takes place. Um, there, there's been a process ongoing for, uh, for a period of time with respect to, uh, arriving at that agreement. And, um, uh, uh, thi- this, so we do have the luxury of some additional times in arriving at that agreement. Uh, we're confident that we will be able to reach agreement with the county, uh, but that will be a, uh, an important part of it. So I would suspect you're looking in between that process, the EIR, and all the other entitlements involved. Uh, I, I would be surprised if all of that gets done, uh, in less than a year.
Oh, okay. So, if I may, I, I, and I understand that we're gonna move back up a little bit. I know we're gonna go through the LAVCO process, but is this, do we have a final map yet?
No, no, not that.
Okay, good.
That's up till the end of all of this process.
Okay, 'cause there is some concerns that I have over what we have already. Um, and I think you kinda know where I'm gonna go with this. Um, looking at our roads, we're gonna go back to the same thing as we have over there, where everything's super small, nothing fits, no garages. Two, one, you know, two exits for all these homes. And when we start looking at this, when we, when you don't have garages, at the number of houses and the number of cars that, we're looking at sixteen hundred cars into this area with such small lots. So the roads, the lot size, we're going to a smaller lot size, so they're, they're getting rid of our garages. Um, the, obviously, vehicles, parks, the park size are just miniature parks. We're at, at a small scale. So all these little things that, that, I'm hoping that we can look at. You know, we talked before and into our plans to make sure that we integrate our, our traffic, whether it's speed bumps or stop signs, all of that good stuff that we don't have to go back and do later. That we make sure we can address it, and I don't think we're there yet, but I just wanna make sure that we can start going that route.
Yes, all those items will be addressed through this process. And you'll have, you also have an opportunity to take a look at the tentative map.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll make comments. And so we are in that process on the notice of preparations, so everyone's gonna have the opportunity to do so as part of, as part of the process, a traffic study is also required.
Okay, good, thank you, I just making sure.
Yes.
Because it kinda scared me just looking at it the way it is, it's like, whoa. This is a little tough, even looking at the units for the multifamily home. Um, that's a lot of cars for the number of units that just in that little section, they're not gonna fit. And we're already having a problem down here on Neco, I don't wanna see that, I, I wouldn't like to see that again. Right, so, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion for approval?
I have a motion to approve. I'm taking a motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Alright.
Alright.
Okay, up next is C, C four. Approve an agreement with Turbo Data Systems Incorporated for citation processing and co- collective services for the Imperial Police Department, presented by Chief Ralph.
Good evening, Mayor Harper and the rest of council and our auxiliary council members for the day. The police department is looking to enter into a five-year agreement with Turbo Data Systems for the purposes of collection and citation management. Uh, the primary focus is for parking and parking collections. The added advantage for us is gonna, it's gonna reduce the hour and time demand for services on existing staff, and it farms it out to a company that's been around for forty years. And they are in the collections and scofflaw management for non-compliance and collections of parking citation fees primarily is what we're looking for. It's expandable down the road, we're looking at in- integrating a handheld ticket writing system for parking enforcement, which is completely automated and digital and would eliminate the triplicates that we are currently using. Uh, it's expandable beyond that, but that's our main two purposes that we're gonna be using it for, for the police department.
Alrighty, any question?
What, I'm sorry, did I meant, what do we currently use in chief?
We have nothing, we use existing staff mailers.
Okay.
And we, it's, it, it's a hit or miss effort.
Okay.
Does this affect our information systems at all?
No, not at all. Completely web-based.
How much will the parking tickets be?
So the parking tickets themselves vary based upon the violations. Uh, they could range up into the several hundred of dollars for ca- for handicap violations. Um, and traditionally, in the thirty to fifty dollar range for city ordinance violations.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? How many parking tickets will you give out?
I haven't given out any in a long, long time. Um, but patrol, it just varies, depends upon the day of the week. And it's, it's, it, it's a enforcement of opportunity as opposed to a problem for reduction, but it can vary from a couple a day to several a day.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I have second emotion.
That, that was we need a national motion. I'm gonna make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Katie, do we need to reflect it on the record that they are actually making the motion on our behalf?
For you guys, yeah, Christina, if you can track it, that would be great.
Okay.
Maybe after we, we do voting, as long as the council people are clear on the computer in front of the correct computer, then we can track your vote. We'll tie the motions to the person talking, whispering in there.
Okay.
You're gonna say, I'm gonna make
Who are we at?
We're gonna have Alistair do the motion, so make a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve proposal for citation processing and collections contract with Turbo Data Systems. I second the motion.
Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you crew. Next up, C five. Approve a rate adjustment and agreement with HDL Corin and Core for property tax consulting and audit services. Presenter, Mr. Menrichis.
Good evening, mayors, council members. Um, we have a data, um, contract, uh, with HDL, which is our property and sales, uh, consultants. This is just, uh, an updated, uh, rate, which is minimal, actually, it's only seven hundred fifty dollars more per year. So, um, actually looking for approval so we can enter into a five-year agreement. And I'll stand for any questions.
Now, who does your consulting now, or?
They do.
They, they?
They, they have been doing it since, uh, nineteen ninety-six with the city.
And they're coming off a three-year contract?
They're coming off of like twenty-year contracts. They have been, uh, stagnant for all those years.
I have a question. So how long have the taxes stayed at seven thousand five hundred?
Can you repeat the question, I don't hear?
How long have the taxes stayed at seven thousand five hundred?
Well, that's not the taxes, that's the actual, uh, contract rate they charge, and they have been charging that since, uh, nineteen ninety-six.
Does the rate increase on an annual sliding scale?
It will increase on a five percent scale per year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I have a motion? For how many years?
This will be a five-year contract.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I have a motion?
I want a motion for approval. I wanna second the motion.
So move. Do I have a second?
Do I have a s- Yes. A second.
I have a motion and a second, please vote.
Alright, hit the green button. Till it turns, till the light turns green, all the way, one more time, do it again, there it is.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next, C six. Discussion regarding city of Imperial Summer Recreation, which I moved till next thing, so we're gonna skip that one. Didn't do very good on my notes.
Mr. City Manager, do I have a report?
I have nothing for the council this evening, thank you.
Do I have a report for community development?
Um, yes, quick report on Highway two six, uh, we achieved a milestone. Uh, we were able to pave the left tomb pockets, we opened up a couple streets. Um, so for the next thirty, forty-five days, we're gonna be working on the landscaping, we're doing the water ties, we're doing all the underground, um, cotton fields, and, uh, we're working on the, the, the trees and shrubs. Thank you.
Does Public Services have a report?
Yes, just a quick report, we'd like to let the council members know, mayors know, that, uh, we have two projects that have actually started. We have our manhole rehabilitation and lift station rehabilitation going. We've repaired one manhole already at First and Imperial, we're working on the rest of them. Uh, the Ayton Sewer Project Pipeline Replacement is what we have coming up next. Once that gets going, we'll have schedules out, and if we have any impacts to water, sewer, or residents, we'll be sure to put those notices out.
Thank you. Does Parks and Recreation have a report?
Yes, uh, Ms. Mayor, we do have a report for the council night. Uh, first and foremost, I wanna congratulate all of you up there right now. Uh, it takes a lot of, uh, you know, intelligence and, uh, a lot of, uh, things you, you, the things you did to submit your, uh, essays and things to the school. Uh, happy to see all you guys in there, and we'll see how involved we can get you into fun things we do for Parks and Rec, so.
Thank you.
Um, first thing I wanna mention is we have a movie at Monterey Park next Friday at seven PM, we'll be showing Nightmare Before Christmas. Uh, and then we have, although it's not our city event, we have the Harvest Festival that's happening at, uh, Faith Assembly on October sixteenth from six to eight thirty. So if you guys are in town, uh, please attend that. And two days later, we have, uh, October eighteenth, our first event downtown, uh, which includes our State of the City, a lot of other fun things like live music, food, uh, different merchandise vendors for everybody to enjoy and check out. And, uh, we also have the Trunk or Treat, which is at Eager Park on October twenty-fourth from six to ten PM at, uh, Eager. So if you guys don't have anywhere else or haven't trick-or-treated yet, please come see us there. Uh, we have a lot of goodies, a lot of, uh, live entertainment, music, and all those fun things for everybody, for the whole family to enjoy. So, and I think that's
Thank you. Who's the live entertainment, who's the band?
That is a very good question.
No, no.
So, for which event, uh, council member? Which one of the events? So what is it, what is he asking, just in general?
Yeah, in general, who the band is.
So we have, we have a Latin fusion band, uh, that we have for Fiesta de los Muertos. And then we have a cover band that will be playing And then we have a cover band that will be playing at the Trunk or Treat as well. It's gonna be an eighties rock, classic rock cover band that we have. So we do have some, you know, the council spoke that wanted to have some more local talent that was attending, so we have a lot of local bands that are in our lineup this year. So we're, we'll be highlighting those things throughout our event series.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a suggestion, maybe for more student participation, you could do bands from schools in Imperial to do it next year or other years for, like, local events.
So that's a very good suggestion. We do have that slated for our Christmas event, so we do have some, I don't know if it's called the choir, some bands that are from the local schools, not only from Imperial but from other areas as well, so we do have that. But we'll try to incorporate that a little bit more in our events. Thank you for the suggestion.
Do I have a report from IT?
I have nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a report from Chief of Police?
I have nothing for you this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a report from Fire Chief?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Thanks again for the proclamation this evening. This is a follow-up. We will be performing public education at all the schools in the city over the next couple of weeks, as well as several in the unincorporated areas. So again, thank you. And then, I don't know if this new council is gonna want Sparky instead of me here for the next year. I can arrange that if you want. No, it's okay?
Yeah, you're good.
Alright, thank you.
Well, chief, they almost traded, chief, they almost traded you in on that one.
Do I have a report from Administrative Services?
Not really a report, Mora, heads up, I wasn't sure I was gonna be here tonight, so we'll bring in the capital improvement projects budget for next council meeting. That will be all, thank you.
Do I have a report from Human Resources?
Yes. So I would like to echo Tony and say congratulations to all of you this evening. It does take a lot to come up here and public speak and run a meeting, so I'm very proud of all of you. And so I would also like to introduce our new hires that we've hired in the last couple of weeks. And so our first new hire is, we have a slideshow right up here on the TV, is gonna be Larissa Alvarado. She's an administrative assistant. She's working here at our library, just on the other side of this wall. And then we have Ricardo Rizales, who is a collection system worker one out at our wastewater plant for public services. So if you see them when you do your tour, make sure you say welcome and hello.
I think I just got a dose of being an older person compared to our new young council. I was trying to show him, okay, we have the screen right here. He's like, there's one back there at the back.
Stacy, Stacy, good luck, right? My eyes ain't that good.
Are there any mayor and council member reports?
The only report I have is that we did get to attend, kind of like a lot of us attended the IVRCC last week. That was a good event, and congratulations to Mayor Protem Obeso Martinez for her award, so congratulations on that one. Also attended ICTC, LAFCO, and, let me see, what else did we have? Oh, we attended, me and Mr. Tucker attended the two-year opening, grand opening for Mona Lisa. That was nice to see. Oh, nice to see a lot of different people and thriving business within the City of Imperial. Other than that, no, weather's getting cooler. Staff, thank you guys very much for everything you guys do, keeping our city running, so, thank you, keep up the good work. Oh, you know what? Sorry. Friday, I think a lot of us are gonna be there, hopefully at the Public Safety Gala. Hope to see you guys there. We do got some recognition of our employees, so, thank you.
I have nothing to report, Mr. Mayor or Ms. Mayor.
So, Ms. Mayor and Mr. Mayor, thank you to the Imperial Valley Regional Chamber of Commerce for the Patricia Gotti Award. I was so surprised. I was putting in other people's names in the hat, and then somehow my name got thrown in there, so thank you for that. We had a second Eagle Scout in my family, so I was very proud, thank you for everybody who attended, and thank you, Mr. Barano, for being our MC that day. And then I ended my presidency as the Imperial County Division President of League of Cities. So we have new, new people, and I wish them luck, but I'm still on the other board, so, thank you.
And like the other council members, I too attended the Imperial Valley Regional Chamber of Commerce, and big congratulations to you. That's quite an accomplishment there, and I was so proud to have one of our members going up there. We're normally there to represent the, the city and congratulate others, and to have one of ours up there was, was pretty awesome. And thank you also for your, your service at the California League of Cities, and I wish the best of luck to our new board that has taken over for the next year. And I think that's, was it this past time? Thank you.
You guys have anything to report out, council members?
Do you have anything to say?
Anything spectacular you did this week?
Nothing to report. On softball, I got two good hits.
Alistair, do you have anything to report? Something cool that happened at school or home?
I'd say Mr. Alistair learned one-on-one about governance today, because when things don't go the way you go to that body, and you voice your concerns, and, you know, you go to the people that concern, that make it happen, right? Can it be about something that has happened recently, like in this room? I would like how, instead of just the mayor coming up, the mayor of the day coming up here, all of the people who were in the top three or top four were chosen to be a council member or the mayor.
If I may add, Mr. Bear, Ethan here keeps asking, am I gonna be here all day? Do I have to be here all the time? Does this get me out of school? Do I have to attend all the events? Yeah, we're gonna attend a lot of events. And so, for the council members, being a mayor is a lot of work. Being a council member is even harder, because you gotta support your mayor. So we're gonna be there for him or for her when the help is needed. So we're gonna be at all the events, all the meetings, we're gonna do all the tours all together, to make sure you guys support your mayor.
I will tell you, I heard him asking quite a bit, don't worry, you're not gonna get in trouble, you won't miss school for, for having to be here, so.
I think mom and dad, I think he was hoping he would have to miss school, you know, have to be here all day, but no, we'll, we'll, we'll get him squared away. And, you know, he looked at the budget, I don't have seven hundred and fifty dollars. We'll take care of it. We'll take care of that for you, huh? Okay, alright. So, nothing further, Ms. Mayor.
I adjourn this meeting until the next regular meeting of the Imperial City Council on Wednesday, October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Excellent. We're just gonna continue for closed session privately in the back, so, just for the.